Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd at 5:30 PM. We're going to have an invocation from Pastor Kay Zimmerman from Chapelana Hill, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Patty Gilmore from the Western Arizona Humane Society.
Let's pray. Father God, we invite your presence here tonight. And thank you for our city leaders. I ask for your wisdom and discernment to know the best decisions for our citizens. Curs our cities and every destructive force in our lives. I pray for protection over our police department, fire department, all of our emergency medical teams, all of our--
Was it not on? All of our city leaders and city workers cause us to function as one with you, that our city will become all that it was created to be. And we agree with your decree. And I decree over the city of Lake Havasu City that this city shall be a city of righteousness that honors God in all her ways, a city of hope to all her people and all those who come here, a city of light where darkness finds no room to hide, a city of love that prospers in all her ways, providing prosperity and goodwill to all her people as well as those surrounding her, and a city of peace to all who dwell here in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Patty, did you want to share a little bit about your organization with us?
Yes, spend a few minutes. Thank you.
Yeah. You all know who the Western Arizona Humane Society is. We are the nonprofit that runs our city shelter. At the moment, the shelter is very, very overcrowded, as are most shelters throughout the United States. There are about 700 shelters throughout the United States, and they're all busting at the seams. It's got to do with inflation. It's got to do with economics, but I'm not getting into that, but it's really bad at the moment. We're very lucky, though, because Lake Havasu is a wonderful city because it's extremely pet friendly. Whenever we ask for donations, they come in very, very quickly. We have our big fundraiser on May the 3rd, which is Top Hat and Tales, and we are sold out. Sorry, you can't come. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell--
Here.
Michelle Lynn--
Here.
Jenny Koch--
Here.
Jim Dolan--
I'm here.
David Lane--
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses--
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehi--
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item five, the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion.
Please.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. We'll start with item 6.1, which is Announce Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, two alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is our City Managers' Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We kicked off this month with several proclamations, bringing awareness to very important causes, including Child Abuse Prevention Month and Crimes Victims Awareness Week. This month, in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month, we lit the bridge up blue. Looked wonderful. Other proclamations throughout the city included Donate a Life Month, the inaugural Chamber Building Industry Alliance Home Show Day, Education and Sharing, ribbon cuttings for the newly installed sets at swing sets and the moby mats at Rotary Community Park, thanks to the Chamber Leadership Group, and the Havasu Water Smart Demonstration Garden. And Vice Mayor Moses, you attended the Veterans' Court softball game to throw out the first pitch. And if you talk to Judge Clally lately, he's very, very proud of the fact that we beat Kingman with the Veterans team. So Havasu played Kingman, and I think it was a no mercy rule that came into place there. So-- In addition, proclamations from the mayor's office celebrated significant milestones in the community. The first photo on the left is Roz Mailer. She is celebrating her 102nd birthday with Vice Mayor Cameron Moses and Councilmember David Lane. Roz is the oldest female Marine in Lake Havasu City. The circular photo shows her as an aviation mechanic mate during World War II. The top left, we celebrated Diane Fishburne's 80th birthday with a proclamation. And on the bottom right, Vice Mayor, you visited Carl Weldon, who was celebrating 90 years. So happy birthday to all three. Wonderful. The city is excited to announce the commencement of the Core Paving and Water Main Project. Work began this week and will continue through October 22nd. So please be patient as we work through lots of road construction in the upcoming months. But don't worry, the construction activities will not negatively impact Desert Storm this week. This marks a significant investment in our community's infrastructure, ensuring safer and more efficient travel for our residents and our visitors. And as part of this initiative, several key streets in the downtown will get essential maintenance and upgrades, including milling and filling with fresh asphalt. The roads in particular will be McCulloch Boulevard, Swanson Avenue, and Riviera Boulevard. These improvements are necessary to extend the lifespan of these vital roads, which reduces our ongoing maintenance costs from the city's perspective. In order to maintain a smooth flow of traffic and access to local businesses during construction, we will have traffic control measures and slowed construction zones in place to ensure the safety of the motorists, pedestrians, and our employees and contractors. The city extends our gratitude to residents and businesses for their patience and cooperation. If you have questions about the project or want to know a little bit more about it, please contact our Public Works Department at 453-6336. And we need your help. We're experiencing an increase of trash and debris piling up on Highway 95. We're thankful for some of the efforts that Republic Services has done to clean up some of the efforts, but we need everybody to, when transporting loads down the highway especially, to assist in this measure. We're going to conduct special traffic details, our police department will be, and that detail will be aimed at educating motorists who are transporting unsecured loads. Anyone littering on the highway or traveling with an unsecured load could or may receive a citation. The law states, ASRS states, that the load must be covered and secured in a manner to prevent the covering and the load from becoming loose, detached, or prevent any hazard to other motorists. So whether you're heading to the landfill or traveling across town, please strap down your-- and secure all items in your car, your truck, or on your trailer. And if you have any questions, please contact Sergeant Ridgway at our police department at 855-1171. So yes, please, we all need to do our part. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Moving on to item seven, into our public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening. During this part of the meeting, we will open up a public discussion at each of the public hearings. We encourage, if you want to have a conversation during that time, to do so when we open the public hearing. You'll come up to the podium, you'll state your name for the record. There will be a light countdown on the screens for the amount of time that you have remaining in your comments to the council. At the end of the meeting, we'll also have a call to the public. That's where you can address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu that may not be on the agenda. But if you talk during Call to the Public, we can't have a two-way conversation. So we won't be able to answer your question or reply to that. So again, we encourage you to have your feedback heard during the actual public hearing. We'll start by with item 7.1, which is a Series 6 Bar Liquor License for Mustang Sally's Saloon at 91 London Bridge Road, Suite 103. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Amanda Rhodey has applied for a Series 6 Bar Liquor License for Mustang Sally's Saloon located at 91 London Bridge Road, Suite 103. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 6 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Williams or for the applicant, for members of the council? Seeing now, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series 6 Bar Liquor License for Mustang Sally's Saloon, 91 London Bridge Road, Suite Number 103.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Sunny Stop at 1732 McCulloch Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Haran Oskon has applied for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Sunny Stop located at 1732 McCulloch Boulevard South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 10 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council, for Ms. Williams or the applicant on this item? Seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Sunny Stop, 1732 McCulloch Boulevard South.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Koch? Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
All right, item 7.3 is approve, excuse me, Adopt Resolution Number 24-3738, Appointing Members to Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustment. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration for appointment as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment. An appointment is necessary to fill a regular member vacancy with the Board of Adjustment currently has one regular member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. The Application Review Panel conducted interviews for the Board of Adjustment on April 4th and recommends that Kelly Lutz be appointed as a regular member with a term ending June 30th, 2026. Mr. Lutz's application was provided to you in the packet, and he is in attendance tonight to answer any questions from the council.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions, Ms. Williams? Mr. Lutz, would you like to come to the podium and just say hello to the council and take any questions that might, for members of the council?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your interest in Lake Havasu City. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Lutz? All right, great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Moses?
Kelly, thank you for your interest in this. I really appreciate anyone stepping up and offering to their services for something like this. What is your understanding of what the job entails?
Basically, it's a review of anything that was denied. So that's what it's about.
Anything that was denied?
Denied as far as zoning and commission, zonings that was denied previously.
Okay. All ready?
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Again, thank you, Mr. Lutz, for stepping up to volunteer for this position. Any questions or comments from members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Campbell?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3738, Appointing Kelly Lutz as a regular member to the Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustments with the term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Lutz. And again, thank you for stepping up. Item 7.4 is Adopt Ordinance Number 24-1330, declaring the document entitled 2024 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code Title IV Water and Wastewater Regulations, April 23rd, 2024, a public record, and adopting by reference Water and Wastewater Regulations and Penalties, including service, billing, connections, charge, private fire protection services, and backflow prevention, and repealing Lake Havasu City Code Chapters 8.05 and 8.20 and Sections 11.04.280 and 11.04.290 to amend and consolidate all water and wastewater regulations into Title IV. Mr. Kozlowski, if you could begin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item to adopt the updates to the water and wastewater regulations is here before you tonight. Tim Kellet is available via Teams to provide that presentation. He is currently at AZ Waters Conference in Phoenix, so he will give that presentation regarding the updates and some of the changes we've made based off of the introduction of these regulation changes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Kellet.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. Welcome, Mr. Kellet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Firstly, obligatory mic check and making sure everybody can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you, but Steve in the back, if you could just turn our screens on to what is on the wall, that'd be great. All right, Mr. Kellet, we're ready to begin.
Fantastic. Okay, well, thank you. As you will recall, we introduced this particular revision back on the last council meeting on April 9th. Received feedback both from the public and from council, and have made the adjustments needed to make this something that is going to work for the city. Some of the larger updates are going to be covered in the hydrant meter section, which we'll go through next. However, there were a few more edits for clarity, a couple of places where word choices were improved, and a couple of places where capitalization was missed. Those have been noted in the track changes version that was given to council. But the hydrant meter is the section that caused quite a bit of conversation last time, and staff took those comments and made adjustments which we'll review. Before going over those comments, just to give everybody a better sense of what we're talking about, when we're talking about a hydrant meter, what you're seeing there in the picture is an example of a hydrant meter. It's an ability for somebody to measure the amount of water coming out of a fire hydrant. Typically, it'll have a blue section there, which is going to be where the meter itself is, the part that's measuring the flow. And that red handle on the end, that's a gate valve. That's how you would be able to monitor the flow or utilize the flow. And these are meant for temporary use. They do not stay there long-term. They're usually meant for construction projects. And with that visual of what it looks like, let me review some of the major things that we introduced last time and where it has been revised to. So when we first brought this on April 9th, the hydrant meter section stated the city staff would be performing all the installs of the meters. That has been revised to the applicant will be issued the meter and put it where they need it. We introduced this item saying that city staff would read all the meters, and that has been revised to the applicant will send in the reads. We also introduced that the city staff would be responsible for moving meters from each of the hydrants, and now that has been revised to an applicant can remove, move the meter as needed. Additional changes within this section that should be noted is that the deposits will now be based on the master fee schedule. That's something that comes before council every year. So when we need to increase the deposits, that will be a part of that process. We are proposing that applicants who fail to report their meter reads can be fined up to $500 for not repeating, for not reporting their fines. And another significant change is that applicants are required to exchange your meter every six months. Within this one, it's interesting that we're actually relaxing the requirements a little bit. Previously, the meter was supposed to have been brought to Public Works to be flow-tested every three months, and instead, we're going to move that to six months and just do a straight exchange, so that somebody who needs a meter just come in, switch it out. How, and this will allow us to both true up the meter reads and ensure that those flow tests and meter accuracy tests are being performed. And then failure to bring the meter in under this particular provision can also, can be fined up to $500. At this point, we are bringing it to council for final review and comment and seeking adoption of these regulations. And if they are adopted, those regulations will go into effect 30 days after adoption. And at that point, we're able to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kellet, and thank you for the presentation and taking the feedback from the introduction into account in what is now in front of us. Are there questions or comments from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I do. And first off, I want to thank you for this presentation. It's very clear to read and understand, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the track changes that they did. It's very informative. I did go through it with a fine-tooth comb, and as I did that, I have a couple concerns. If everybody can change to page number nine, I love page numbers too. And it's up to number five. So basically, this says unauthorized use of water or water systems. We had, I had talked with Ms. Gary and Mr. Knutson in regards to this, and what this looks like to me is, basically, it says permitted water sprinklers to spray onto sidewalks. This is unauthorized use, by the way, onto streets to permit water to run from the water user's property onto public sidewalks and streets to cause risk and/or damage to the public or to public or private property. And the reason why this brought, it came to my attention, I was very happy that was in there. And the reason why I say that is, I don't want to go into the detail of it, but a local company here in town has the, is the one that gets hired by the city occasionally because they have the contract for materials to go and repair certain patches around the community. And with that, it's me, it's our company, I just will tell you that. But when we go around and do that, it upsets us because we will see a patch of asphalt that is being damaged on a regular basis because of somebody else's irrigation, either a geyser, I won't start naming names, but there are communities that I walk around a lot, and it upsets me because I see broken irrigation valves running onto our city property, destroying our sidewalks, and they're destroying our asphalt, and we're having to do excessive pavement preservation. So I wanted to bring it a little, take that a little bit further and put, property owner will be responsible for any costs due to unauthorized usage or overspray. So that was one of my concerns. Just to add that in there, I thought that was good. If you go to page, and this is just kind of clerical, if we're going to do this, and it's a big code, and it's very good, I reviewed it quite a bit. If you go to page, page number 40, and it's under 4.28.20 application, it's just an application process, and there it seems like item number C, it says the City Water Division will review the hydrant location requested by the applicant. Put the location on the hydrant meter will be the discretion of the Water Division based on system's capabilities. Capabilities include pressure, adverse effects, and existing water customers for water systems within the requested zone. If for any reason, the request of hydrant to be used is not available for a hydrant meter, the Water Division will notify the applicant and provide ultimate location. I think that we should strike that unless somebody feels differently about that, because it kind of goes back to the original conversation of, we have to contact the Water Division or the Public Works Department to find out what meters we can use. And at this point, in a lot of the construction jobs, they'd probably have to put all the meters in the community as they're mapping. And I just wish the city would figure out a better way to let the community know what hydrants we can use and can't use. So either by marking them directly, and then further in the conversation of this code, it does say that the city has the right to remove that water meter if they feel the need at any particular time. So it's kind of redundant, but the part that bothers me, it says that we have to tell you the exact hydrant and location of when we're going to use it, and that's kind of a difficult process. And then if we go to page, then I'm done, I promise. Then you go to page, oh, it doesn't have a page number, but it's chapter 4.28 where they are actively, actually track changes on it. It says that it's basically--
Yes, I think for, if you don't have that document in front of you, page 39--
Oh, mine does--
In our packet--
I don't have numbers again.
No, yours is, yours is with the draft from original, but they've all been incorporated into the final document--
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the page--
So page 39--
Thank you.
Chapter 4.28 Hydrone Meters is where Councilmember Campbell is at. And so if you want to go from there.
Yeah, and this is my last one. So it's application, it's an application process, and it says, number four, a map indicated the requested hydrant for the hydrant meter to be connected. That, again, needs to kind of be strict, as far as I'm concerned, because nobody really knows when you're a contractor and you're moving hydrants all around for what, hydrant meters around and/or pest control people around, to be having to contact and give a map to the city slows down the process and it puts us back in where we were from before. So those are my three changes to this amended document. Thank you much. If anybody has any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Mr. Kellet, can you address that? So the last two topics were on the Hydrone Meters, Chapter 4.28. It was recommended that under letter B, number four, be strict, or strike through, and then letter C. Can you give us a little bit of background of why that is in the code section in the first place and what staff was trying to accomplish with those two items?
Absolutely. It'd be my pleasure. In this particular case, we were viewing this as sort of a customer service aspect. We regularly will have shutdowns that we are planning, and we regularly have areas where we know we're going to be doing work. And it was just trying to be a little more proactive, so that if somebody was going to put a meter in a location, if they told us where it was going, we would be able to say, hey, next week, Tuesday, we're going to have that down for a week. So that's really not a good place for you to put it. That was the overall intent, is just making sure we did a little more customer service. So if we knew where they were, we could be better informed about who's using them and not chasing people who are using them correctly, and also just making sure that that resource that somebody's going to depend on was available to them.
So if the council were to strike through those two items, would that operationally impact what you're trying to achieve?
No, no, sir. In this case, what would happen is that we wouldn't be able to offer that. And in reality, if somebody called the Public Works Division, we could tell them, hey, that one's out or it's not out. The other thing is, of course, we're always going to try to protect our system as best we can, but we can also do that through various other operational means. It's original intent was to make it so that we weren't telling, weren't having people think they could use a meter or a valve that wasn't available.
So then are there concerns if a particular meter or hydrant was used, and we then had something happen down pipe from that, would we be able to identify who that that might have been, or was that what you're trying to achieve through this code section, or that is irrelevant to this?
That, the investigation would be almost irrelevant from the standpoint of, we would have to know who the meter was, when they were using it. It would be helpful if we were trying to do some sort of leak investigation to know if a meter was being used there, that that would be helpful. But again, what we were trying to achieve here is just, I really felt bad about the idea that a contractor was being held back two, three, four weeks because the city was taking too long to install them or move them. And then it occurred to me, seeing all these shutdown notices that come through the system, thinking, and these are regularly, they're scheduled shutdowns, I'm not talking about breaks in this case, I'm talking about work that we're thinking about doing and planning out, and just being able to provide that.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, given that, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't see a problem than striking those, those two requests on Chapter 4.28. Other comments from members of the council on--
Mayor, the only, I understand what he's saying, and I appreciate you saying the same thing, because the difference with contractors, they're up at 4:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, and sometimes they don't know until city councils closed, or the city halls closed, on where they need to be slight, you know, hooking up to meters and doing desk control for their day. So that's what we find to be a problem, is a lot of the hours that we're at work, the city is not at work. So if there was an overall map, or if they wanted to shoot out to their applicants, because they should not have a whole lot of applicants, like a little email that says, please avoid hydrant, blah, 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 I know that our company, and I'm only, it's not about me. I feel that if I'm having a problem with it, or I have a concern about it, I'm sure other people have a concern about it, and I want to make their job as easy as well. And I want to make their job as easy as well. So if we could get an update of a meter, a hydrant and a location, it would be um, high, I, I, it would be addressed under that direction.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. I, I'll give a shout out to our GSI, GIS team right now, because if you do go to our website and go to um, LHCaz.gov/maps, you'll be able to go on there and there's about 20 or more layers you could put on there. One of them is hydrants and other public infrastructure. So the map does come up uh, very regularly, but uh, based on Mr. Kellet's um, answers to some of the questions, um, I don't see an issue with uh, chapter 4.28 uh, striking through per Councilmember Campbell's request. Uh, letter B, number four and letter C. And I see like I'm shaking heads on those. Those are the two requests that uh, that you had asked for on that. Now there's your third request. Let's, let's uh, unpack that real fast.
Can I just confirm one more thing?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Tim, uh, I, I just wanted to make sure that that's not going to put our system at risk by making this change. That's, I mean, that's the ultimate thing we're concerned about. And uh, if uh, if a meter needs, you know, if a hydrant needs to be down, we're not going to be putting our system at risk, are we?
Uh, system risk is anytime somebody's attached into a system, you're uh, taking on some level of risk. This is a low level of risk. I would not want to say that it's a no level, uh, that, that would be disingenuous. We do need to know kind of what's going on with the system. If a low pressure alarm is happening in an area, knowing that we have three hydrant meters cooked up in an area, that, that could be good information. Uh, this is, it would also be considered slightly more of a proactive approach of knowing what's going on with our system instead of reactive. Will it like seriously put our system in jeopardy? No, no, that, that would be dramatic for me to say.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Right, and then uh, Councilmember Campbell also mentioned on page nine um, about uh, the unauthorized use of water um, in the systems at section, uh, it actually starts on page eight, excuse me, uh, section, chapter 4.08.060, the unauthorized use of water or water in the system. Uh, on letter A, it's a violation two, and then it gives through eight items. Um, I believe what uh, you were requesting Councilmember Campbell is then we would add a, a letter D. Um, so we would have letter A with the eight items, letter B, letter C as written in the document. And let, letter D would then uh, list out and say, um, it would be the property owner's responsibility for any damaged infras- or damaged roadways or whatever that may be.
If the city public works found that it was due to a broken irrigation or a prop- property issue.
Okay, perfect. And are there any questions from members of council on that particular component? Okay, uh, Councilmember Lynn?
Thanks, sir. The only thing that I would say about that is is it a neglect or is it accidental? If it's, if it's accidental, you know, are we going to pursue somebody because they had an accidental water break? Uh, and I don't, or are we going to just go after everyone? But if it's neglect, then ab- absolutely, I think we should go after them. But sometimes with accidents, um, and they don't know that, I'd hate for a homeowner to get a big bill because their sprinkler system was accidentally watering out on the, the road and it's something that we can fix internally. It's, do we really want to judge, pass that on to a homeowner, the cost of that?
Sure, yeah. The way that the um, uh, adjustment would be based on Councilmember Campbell's uh, request would be that um, letter D would state that all cost repair uh, damage caused to city property due to unauthorized use of water or water system will be the responsibility of the account holder or property owner. Um, I, I, I think with all code sections that we have, you know, it, it's at the discretion of, of the department, whether that's law enforcement or um, code enforcement or public works in, in this matter, but.
So, so that's something Denise from code enforcement can sit there and work through.
I would say public works would be, would be this one. Is public works would be the one that manages the system, but uh.
Mayor?
Yes.
What I, my, our experience is it's not like an accident. It's usually somebody that has a broken pipe that refuses to fix it in the same location year after year after year. Not only are they wasting all that water, they're destroying the sidewalk and they're destroying our streets. That's where I was leading to, and it happens quite a bit and it's frustrating because it, they don't fix it. They're aware of it. The code has been addressed, code enforcement has been, and uh, yeah, and this, Mr. Knutson has, you know, we've, we've had these conversations about a, quite a few of them that just don't get fixed and you can see the damage. You can really see the damage on the um, the sidewalks where the, you know, you, you see the aggregate bleeding through because it's been rained on so much from a, either a geyser and they just don't fix it. Because I've personally knocked on their doors.
Yeah, so letter, letter D actually is just uh, in my opinion, is clarifying language. Because if you look at that same section under letter A, it's a violation to number four. Use water for washing sidewalks or driveways in a manner that prevents the usual or customary use of public streets and sidewalks by others. It, it, this just clarifies and says, should you be doing that, that it's, it potentially is the cost on the, the um, property owner and or rate payer. Okay, I, now other council members that have other code sections I want to talk about within this. Vice Mayor Moses, you had indicated that you might have some questions uh, on other sections of the code.
Yeah, I had a question for Tim. Uh, just a little more clarity, the, the $500 fine for not reporting, is, is that per month? Is that just one $500 fine? Is that $500 on top of? I, I would think would be on top of the charges because uh, I mean, if, if a bad actor racks up more than $500 and just wants to skip town, then it's actually cheaper just to pay the fine and not the, not the water bill.
Uh, Vice Mayor Moses, thank you for the question. So there will be some operational changes behind the scenes on this one. Uh, one of them will be that city staff will be contacting the no reads to see if they are truly no reads, uh, see if we're getting responses from them. It is a per occurrence fine as proposed. So if you go two months, you're at a thousand dollars worth of fines after two months. However, by that time you've been called and notified and we've tried to reach out from you. And now we know we have, like you said, a bad actor, somebody out there who's not reporting the reads and may not even know where their meter is. And we need to know about those situations so we can address them.
Yeah, thank you, Tim.
There any other questions, members of council?
Mayor, I do think they did a really good job on saying every six months, you're supposed to bring in your meters and have them completely replaced and so they can kind of track what's out there and what's not. Because I don't think this is a really common situation. Most contractors or pest control people have this and it's a service to them and it's their business, it's their livelihood. So they take pretty good care of it in most of them, 99% of them.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. Uh, it might be for Ms. Olson. But in the case of doing a fine or, or a new fee in the structure, which is the $500, does it need to be posted for 60 days prior to implementation? So they, this code section if adopted this evening would go into effect 30 days. What does that do for the, the new fee structure based on the fine?
My understanding related to a fine, that is not part of the master fee schedule, so should not be subject to that, that process?
Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
That's from Kelly.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions or comments from members of council before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, our city manager told us uh, at the last meeting that we had some outstanding water. Things, are that all cleared up now? Do we have any, any, any extra ones? Are we good?
No, we're far from good. Uh, there are meters that are outstanding that were hard at work um, based on the changes in the regulations and, and uh, the addressing it through our operations. But we have many missing meters that are either reported stolen or lost. Um, some of those that, that might be an accurate statement and some of those we know that it's not. So what you're not seeing in the regulations is our ability to address that from an operational perspective. Will the uh, reason to return that meter every six months and for replacement? So we can do the testing on it, or we're also going to clearly mark them. So, and we're going to educate the entire city's team and want a um, in a legal, if I can say, uh, water uh, hyd- uh, meter on a hydrant would look like. Um, so they'll be, they'll be marked and if we find them, we're going to, we're going to collect them, we're going to chart, we're going to charge them for the, for the uh, water usage that they owe to the, to the system and to the, to the city for that regard. Um, but we have dozens uh, that uh, that are outstanding. So in terms of that, you know, in terms of what's out there and what we need to address, uh, this is a process that needs to be identified and we, and, and we're, we're working hard on, on solutions.
Mr. City Manager, I, thank you for that process. So I guess my question is, we're not starting like fresh, like today, once this is passed. There still are outstanding ones. What's, are we ever going to find out who they are? I mean, will they continue to get free water? I mean, I'm trying to figure out like, what that looks like. I mean, if they're missing, like, can we just, how do we, how do we stop them from continually using water if they're missing?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, uh, we will find them. Uh, that, 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 that we are starting that approach in terms of what, what it's going to take uh, to identify those, the legal meters that are out there. Um, these are individuals that are stealing water from the system. So everybody else is paying for water use and they're stealing water. So we are taking every effort possible for us to identify uh, these bad actors and uh, and hold them accountable for the, for the water use that they uh, they've uh, they've used.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Lynn, did you have any?
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, would it be easier, the new meters that are going out under this, could they be marked? So if like, public works was out there and saw some meters that didn't have a marking on it, that they would know they were the old ones?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, yeah, that's one of our strategies. Um, and then, so then our, our water division uh, um, team staff will be looking at, looking for those. Uh, and again, we're going to be um, we'll let the council, we'll, we'll let you in on that process as well too. So anybody that sees a um, uh, uh, meter that's not supposed to be there, we will clearly know just by driving by and taking a look at it and, and that's going to help us out uh, quite a bit.
The, the good news is these meters, the, the market on it is fairly small. I mean, so it's not that everybody would have access to these or, or need access. And one good thing about Lake Havasu is we're a tight community and once we get the word out that to keep a lookout for these types of hydrants, I'm sure that based on the phone calls I already get, that our phones will be ringing and uh, and we'll be able to address some of those. But thank you for those comments, Councilmember Lynn. Uh, Councilmember Dolan?
I have a question for the city manager. So it is stealing, like this is a criminal act that they can be arrested for and be penalized for other, outside the penalty of not showing up. They, they connect it to a meter and they're stealing it. They can be arrested and go to jail and we're going to do that, right?
It's theft for sure. So uh, Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, it uh, it's theft and will be handled accordingly.
And what about those people that came in and had very, very, very large bills? It's kind of absurd to me that they're not charged with theft, stealing hundreds of thousands of dollars in water that, you know, I'm glad they finally showed up and did the right thing and paid their bill, but if they're stealing water, aren't they being charged? The people that are coming in that have these meters that have been, you know, I mean, you know, you're using this meter and you're not paying your bill for it. You know, that is theft. Are we cracking down on those people to almost making it, you know, so everyone else out there knows that maybe these end up in the dump and we never see them again, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, uh, the, the process we have in place now is uh, moving forward, right? And so we're going to encourage those that have a meter, outstanding meter, that haven't paid, uh, paid that, uh, come in um, before the ordinance goes into uh, to effect, uh, they, they have some, some time to make that happen. Um, but uh, once it's codified and uh, based on council approval and the codification, um, yeah, there will, there'll be, there will certainly be consequences for any, any theft. But um, we are looking at trying to minimize these types of occurrences moving forward and to identify any bad actors in the meantime.
Is it public record of who has those bills and how big they got and why they're not paying them or? No, that'd be a shame. It's nice to know which businesses in town are doing their job and not cheating the community, so.
I lie, your utility records are confidential, so you, you don't give out people's utility information.
That's a shame.
Dan?
Yeah, if I could just real quick on, Councilmember Dolan, one of the areas, if this was to be adopted tonight, these code sections. So we're having all of these different discussions. We had the introduction at our last meeting. This is our, our final adoption based on any uh, changes that we're uh, going to consider, which we're considering several of them this evening. But we're also, as part of the suggested motion, is repealing code sections. So we, we currently, because of, we didn't give the history because we did that during the ID, or during the introduction, but the irrigation drainage district, when we dissolved that district, we had these code sections were in there in addition to chapter point eight, or, or chapter eight, chapter 11. Now all water wastewater will be going into a new chapter, chapter four. So to be much clearer for the water users, for city staff and for enforcement, you know, we're using harsh words that they're stealing water. Some of them might not know, and I'm not trying to give them benefits out, but they just might not know that if you have several meters and you're using them and, and staff changed. But through this process now, uh, we will be able to identify all of those. Um, and with having markings on the meters that they'll be using going forward and they exchange every six months, hopefully all of this goes away. If not, like any code section, we'll come back and we'll adjust the code to make sure that we don't have any nefarious or uh, bad actors in, playing in this area. So uh, that is one of the benefits of, of consolidating all of this into one code chapter. So, Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I just would like to maybe give direction to that when they send out the letters of updating this new code, that I understand a lot of the contractors and my employees will be definitely having their eyes out because they're all in the same world. They're all doing the same construction work and as soon as one's not tagged, if we identify that, I would guarantee you my employees will be contacting the city and letting them know that there is a hydrant that would be unauthorized in this point because it's not been replaced and it's not marked a certain way. So I think once this information gets out and it has, there's been, I think maybe because the hydrant situation in here got a little complicated, it was, we were able to inform a lot of people that were out there and the contractors that I was talking to were very upset about it all and thought, why are, why are we having to pay for the bad actors? But, so I'm sure you'll have a whole recon of them looking for you.
Thank you. All right. Any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, just please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Yeah, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close uh, the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Mayor? Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1330, declaring the document entitled 2024 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code Title IV Water and Wastewater Regulations, April 23rd, 2024. A public record in adopting by reference water and wastewater regulations and penalties and repealing Lake Havasu City Code Chapters 8.05 and 8.20 and Sections 11.04.280 and 11.04.290 to amend and consolidate all water and wastewater regulations into Title IV with addition of subsection D to section 4.08.060 stating all costs to repair damage caused to the city property due to unauthorized use of water or water system will be the responsibility of the account holder slash property owner.
And then if, are you interested in including the strike through of uh, chapter 4.28.020, uh, number four striking through and letter C striking through, based on our conversation?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Gary, is that?
And adding all the stuff that the mayor just said.
Second. Just, just to clarify that, just for the record, so it's subsection 4, 28, O2O, B4 and C. Not just four, but.
Correct, yes.
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski and Mr. Kellit for the presentation.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
All right, we'll move on to item 7.5, which is a, adopt ordinance number 24-1331, approving a rezone of 7,000 Chinawith Drive, APN 120-03-027, a 10 acre meets and bounds parcel from AP Agriculture Preservation District to LI Light Industrial District. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? The subject property is approximately 10 acres and is currently vacant and zoned agricultural preservation. Access to the property is from Highway 95 onto Chinawith Drive. The property is located in the Epcor Water Service Area, not in the city's service area. The abutting properties are a mix of light industrial, industrial and agricultural preservation districts. The agricultural preservation zoning is used as a placeholder until the time of future development requires it to be rezoned for future use. The applicant's letter of intent states that they intend to rezone the property to light industrial, to possibly build an RV and boat storage complex. At its April 3rd, 2024 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Available for any questions and the applicant is also present.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Are there any questions from members of council for Mr. Kearns or the applicant? Seeing none, uh, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1331, approving a rezone of 7,000 Chinawith Drive, APN 120-03-027, a 10-acre meters and bound, meets and bounds parcels from Agricultural Preservation District to Light Industrial District.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses. We have a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? I will just reiterate, Mr. Kearns mentioned it, but this particular project is in the Epcor Water District, which isn't the most stable water district that, that there is. It's outside of, of our area. But it makes it very difficult for some of these properties to develop. We get a lot of conversation about storage units and boat storage and those types of things in our community, but this is an area that's tucked away a bit. And it also doesn't take a lot of water and water is not very plentiful in this particular area. So, and also right now, I, I just shared that information. All we're doing right now is a rezone. But since Mr. Kearns had mentioned that the letter of intent had said, uh, uh, storage, I just mentioned that because it is not a bad use based on, on that known, known area. Mr. Lane, did you have a, a comment or question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that we're, we're not approving storage units. Everybody knows how I feel about storage units. We're, we are approving or disapproving this to be a rezone only to light industrial, which the other parcels around there have already been changed to light industrial. This is going up towards the dump and that is, in my opinion, the appropriate use for light industrial. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.6 is approved cooperative purchase agreement and cooperative purchase of one Deamer's MXP 170E type I four-wheel-drive ambulance mounted on a 2024 Ford F-450 four-by-four diesel chassis from Red Sky Emergency Vehicles. Chief Plafis?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, before you is our, our final ambulance for a medical transport program. This is going to be replacing our 2008 ambulance that we have in our fleet. It is noteworthy that it is at a reduced cost because what we're doing is transferring our cot system into this new ambulance. We are going, using the cooperative agreement through the Houston-Gaveston. This expected delivery for this new ambulance is July of 2024. So it's nice that we were able to work with Red Sky and Houston-Gaveston to make this purchase. If you're going to be approving the amount of $341,362.32, appreciate the support of the medical transport program. We're roughly about five days away before hearing the ruling from the administrative judge. So it's like waiting for Christmas. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer it. So I appreciate your approval.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions from members of the council for Chief Plafis?
I'm a little concerned about his version of Christmas.
Excitement.
Very exciting, though. I get it. Very exciting.
Councilmember Lane, did you have a, a comment or question?
Oh, just so the, the chief can kind of brag a little bit about what they're doing, but when you talk about moving a cot and how that is saving us money, most people think of a cot, you know, you're going to just fold it up and stick it in a corner. Can you kind of elaborate on what the cot actually is and how come they're so expensive?
Mayor, Councilmember Lane, yes. The cot is what is moving the, the patient in and out of the ambulance and transporting them into the back of the ambulance. So the, this current cot that we have, we actually was donated when I first arrived from one of our departments in Illinois. So the cot system in our ambulance is roughly about $68,000. And this cot is motorized, so it actually does all the lifting for our, our paramedics and firefighters. So it reduces back injuries. This has been technology that's been out for about 10 years and the thing is, we have it in our current ambulance just to reduce the, the cost of the ambulance because everything's so expensive. And the availability is that it was in the best interest for us to move that cot and still reuse it in this newer ambulance. And it, it's really saving on back injuries and allowing to our firefighters and paramedics to, to operate safe and safely transport the patient to, to the hospital.
Thank you, Chief. In preparation of this meeting, I learned what the chief just shared with us. It's not, Hollywood has not caught up yet. So that what we see on the, in the movies is not what this is, so. Any additional questions or comments? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the cooperative purchase agreement for emergency vehicles, approve the cooperative purchase of one Deamer's MXP 170E type one four-wheel-drive ambulance mounted on a 2024 Ford F-450 four-by-four diesel chassis from Red Sky Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $341,362.32 and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew the agreement for their three additional one-year terms.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chief. All right, our final public hearing is item 7.7, which is approve services agreement with Stripe Services for payment platform for transit. Mr. Cypress?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and good to see you all again. As we get closer to launching our new direct app, one of the final things we are looking for is a way to get our funding from our riders. And one of them is here today to approve, see if you can approve this service agreement for Stripe. And Stripe is a way that we can use credit cards and debit cards for people to continue on the same platform similar to what we use right now in our current Uber platform we're using direct, so. Via had two different platforms we could use. Unfortunately, right now, this is the only one that actually works for us. But it's a good one to use. It's a very well-known name. A lot of companies use it and I think we'll be secure and happy with using that, our dispatch platform.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cypress. When does the new direct app go into effect? When do people?
Actually, it's live, it goes live today. And anybody can get it. You just go on the App Store and Google Play or the iTunes Store and look under LHC. Soon as you pop that up, it'll pop up LHC Direct. And you can fill everything out, except it won't go live until the first next Wednesday.
First of May.
Yeah. So we're right in the middle right now transitioning everybody over to it, so. But it's there, you can see it, so.
I, I just downloaded it today and it's, it's, it's a very, very well put together app and you guys did a great job.
Yeah, it's, it's, we learned a lot what to do and not to do with, uh, using Uber because Uber was good, but it had a lot of things to it. So now we actually customize this just for us, for the city, so it's very easy to use.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, and I just want to give him a shout out because when I saw that, all the online or websites that I build, I always use the ones that use Stripe because their fees are usually less. So when I saw that our, Patrick is over here working hard, not only doing what he's doing, but he's actually being mindful of your tax dollars as well. So thank you so much for that. That's the one I would use.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Mr. Knutson?
Mayor, I appreciate it. So just, uh, again, to relay the information to the public, they've been able to use the Uber app for the last couple of years. So they go on the Uber app and, and then there's the ability to use our local transit service for $3 or $5 throughout the community, depending on where you're going. Some of those fees have changed. I think we're down to $3.50 or about to go for a $3.
$3.25.
$3.25 throughout the community. But for those that have been using the Uber app to utilize our transit services, that, that process is going to change. There'll be some overlap for the month of May, so you can start, again, download LHC Direct on your phone and that's how you're going to get to the, that, those transit services that the city provides. It'll no longer be on the Uber app. So you're going to have a separate app on your phone, need to download to utilize those services. For $3.25 to get throughout the community is a, a quite, a, quite a benefit compared to other, other services that are out there. So LHC Direct.
There you go.
Download it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. I was overlooking, I think, your shoulder, Vice Mayor Moses' shoulder yesterday when you were downloading it. Is it the city seal? Is that what the, the, when you go to the App Store and it comes up, it looks like kind of the city seal?
It's actually the.
Which the, looks like a transit bus. Yeah, okay, perfect. All right. So yeah, it has direct through it with a, with a circle. So when you're downloading from the App Store, it says direct and, and looks similar to our, our transit vehicles. Excellent. All right, we, have we opened the public hearing or we're waiting for a motion?
Waiting for a motion.
All right, Councilmember Dolan, let's do that.
All righty. I move to approve the Stripe Services Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute and accept the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is item eight, which is a call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council with items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There will be a countdown clock on the screens around the room. City council is not able to have a two-way conversation, so we may not be able to respond directly. We can respond to any, uh, any criticism that might be lodged at one of us, but otherwise we can't have a two-way conversation. Would anyone like to address the city council at call to the public? If so, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
The last item, I did not hear.
Ms. Toy, could you bring the microphone down? Thank you.
On?
Is it, is there a green light on the screen?
There is a green light.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. So first, I didn't hear if there was a call to the public question part for the last item. And I did have a question regarding the direct app, like for people who do not like to add apps to their phone. I like to add photos to my phone, not apps. Storage is just too much and I want my grandchild all over my phone, not apps. Second, I saw today on Facebook that there was a business that had an issue with the city parking lot during Desert Storm. And I just would like to make a suggestion that perhaps the city consider the way it approaches businesses and informing them of when you're going to take away parking lots and things like that from them. Perhaps give them more than 48 hours notice. Might be nice for the business. I just like to state that. And then I have another concern that I would just like to really address to the city. And that is, oh, and by the way, thank you, guys. I know you guys are really amazing people, just so you know that. Over the last couple of weeks, I've noticed that on Highway 95, coming up from Parker and of course going from Havasu to I-40, that there have been a lot of traffic accidents where people have died. I understand that perhaps you might consider some of those areas, not in the jurisdiction of the city, but the jurisdiction of the county or the state. However, you guys recently, one, took funding, or not took funding, I don't know about that. The, you planned a city stoplight at Jamaica and McCollough and then stopped because of the urgent need on Jamaica and Jimmy Webby and put a stop sign there instead of the stoplight. So right now, the city has accepted money for a project from the state. I would just like to recommend that maybe you might want to consider pausing that project and focusing on the highways entering into the city and the urgent need of no, people not dying to try to get to the city to cross our bridge. It's just something that, I don't know what you guys can do about that, but I'm thinking that the highway safety is a little more important right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at call to the public?
Hi, my name is Richard DeSantis, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to say a few words about the new bridge coming up, bridge number two. If I understood correctly, it hasn't been decided yet exactly what it's going to look like. Well, my two favorite bridges in the world are the London Bridge and the Golden Gate Bridge. If it could be a mini Golden Gate Bridge, I'd love that. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Or excuse me, on call to the public?
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. Wanted to thank you for the appointment for the Board of Adjustments. And also I wanted to thank you for your question and answered a little bit better with than my short answer before. I'm fully aware of the importance of the Board of Adjustments and their, and their, their task to review appeals regarding, regarding decisions that the city council has made in the past. So although they don't meet very often, when they do, it's a very important task. So thank you again and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close call to the public. Move on to item nine, which are current events for council committee reports. So are there any council committee reports? Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, just that it's my, my eight-year anniversary tonight and I think it needs to be on record that Kelly made it eight, eight years with me.
Yeah, happy anniversary.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other council committee reports? I would like to make a, a report quickly on the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization. I serve as the chair member, the chairperson. We have Councilmember Koch on the committee. We have Councilmember Campbell on the committee and Councilmember Dolan as an alternate. But we have a staff resignation. Justin Hembry has been the director of the NPO for a few years, has done a fantastic job, has been in, involved in transportation planning in Mojave County for 20-plus years and then we're going to be sad to see him go. With that being said, we need a new director. The, the item is posted on our website. If you have any interest or know anyone that is involved in planning, please have them take a look at that and if they have the skill set to apply for that position. And then also sadly, we have recently lost Gary Knight, who was the State Transportation Board Chair, former council member, or council member in the city of Yuma and also was on our NPO board. And he passed away tragically about a week ago and our condolences to his family, to the city of Yuma. And a, a big thank you for all of the work that Mr. Knight has done with transportation around the state of Arizona. It does not go unnoticed and he really made a lasting impact on the future of transportation in this state. And again, our condolences to his family and to the city of Yuma. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, item 10 is future meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, I don't, I don't have a report on one of the organizations that I sit on, but I was hoping that Councilmember Lane would give a little bit of an update on the Gole Lake Havasu. I did attend that meeting to, um, this last week. And if he wanted to mention anything at that meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Lane, do you have anything you'd like to share?
We, uh, we have a new board chair who's working through things and making personnel changes and, and things like that. And at this particular time, there's, it's a work in progress. So no, there's nothing to report at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lane.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that they're reviewing their bylaws and that I was hoping that the council will be able to get a copy of those new bylaws when they're, when they're finished. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 10 is our future meetings. Our next meeting is on Thursday, May 9, 2024. It's at 9:00 AM. It's a budget in our CIP work session. On Tuesday, May 14, at, um, three, excuse me, at 5:30 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 5:30 PM, we'll also have a regular meeting. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? Item 12, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.